Cut on the mic.
Hear ye, hear ye. Monday, September 16th, 2024, Inkster City Council Meeting is now called to order. Everyone, please stand for our prayer. Who gonna lead us in prayer, honey? Got a good prayer? Yeah, come on. Yeah.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, we come, Lord, this evening just to say thank you for all the many blessings that you continue to bestow upon all of us, Lord. Lord, we're asking that you continue to bring this community together as one, Lord. We ask that you just bless this meeting that is going on tonight, and we ask for positive things for the city of Inkster. We're praying, and praying, and praying for this election, Lord. We ask that your will be done as far as our city as well, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Who calls?
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Chisholm.
Present.
Councilwoman Rutledge.
Present.
Councilman Bishop.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott. Councilwoman Howard. And Councilwoman Richardson. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Everybody, we have to take a look at the agenda. We already eliminated item E that was on the printed agenda about a vacant parcel, but we're gonna add a item E. Yeah, yeah. Grant permission to the city attorney to represent the 22nd District Court in a civil lawsuit.
Yep.
So make that item E. Someone sue the district court as well as our judge, so we have to get permission from city council in order to represent both of them. And we're also adding something on the presentation, Jerome Bivins, for the North River Park Drive Road Project. I hope that's a road project. We're gonna put that down under presentation. Any other additions, deletions for the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve?
Some move.
And probably move the second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Presentation number one. It's Ashley Williams. Come on up.
Good evening, council and residents. Did you guys hear me? So, you know, I'm your friendly neighborhood planning commissioner coming to bring you an update on our progress in becoming a redevelopment-ready community. Last time I was here, I think it was around May, and there's a lot that's happened since, so we'll go ahead and get into it. For those of you who may not know or need a reminder, Redevelopment-Ready Communities is a voluntary technical assistance initiative offered through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. It helps cities like ours with planning, zoning, and economic development. We are on the certified path, and what that means is we're communicating to the public that we've streamlined our processes, that we have a predictable development experience. We're in the position for progress, and we've adopted what they consider to be best practice. Best practice are plans and engagement, zoning, development review, boards and commissions, economic development, and priority development sites. It also makes us eligible for certain funding. We all love funding, right? So diving in a little bit more into practice one, plans and engagement. We are in the process of updating our master plan in partnership with McKenna, and hopefully they'll be completing that or will be adopting that plan by February. We are currently aligned with the downtown and corridor plans, which were adopted back in October of 2018. I'm sorry, adopted in 2018. And then we're in the process of updating our capital improvements plan. So we have a variety of capital investments or major projects, and we need to be aware of what those projects are and how much they cost. So those projects could include like infrastructure, parks, equipment, facilities, and we have certain team members like from finance and engineering who are coming up with a comprehensive plan on what that looks like over six years, and then it will need to be adopted by the governing body. And then we have a public participation plan that's currently aligned, and I'll dive into a little bit more detail about that in a moment. This was a project schedule presented to us by McKenna, and so as you can see, if we're in September, that means they should be beginning the draft of the master plan, and they're taking all that data that they collected from April through August and putting it into that plan. So they did their public outreach, whether it be online or in person, and they're expected to give us an updated presentation on next steps at our next planning commission meeting on Monday, the 23rd. So I definitely invite everybody to come and join and see what they have to say. The public participation plan is essentially a document that, you know, has clear expectations about how we engage with the public in making sure that everyone's represented in the decision-making process. I believe you guys have a copy of it there, right? I'm just gonna outline what the main priority goals are in... Actually, this will start later. So we can go here. Step number one, laying the groundwork. Two, centering the community. Three, making data-driven decisions, making government accountable, and evaluating policy implementation. The plan is supposed to just be a framework that's intentionally broad because as we implement it, we're gonna be fleshing out those finer details. But for example, we start with laying the groundwork, and we form our core team of a variety of individuals who can represent different interests, and then they are, you know, supposed to establish a timeline with a budget and adopt the appropriate, you know, communication tools and strategy that will help us meet the public where they're at. It's supposed to include both traditional and proactive methods of engagement. So for example, this would be a traditional method of engagement. People can come to a city council meeting and engage here. But if we're being innovative, what does that look like when we're trying to listen, learn, and gather stories about what our community looks like? I think a lot of us have strong, you know, roots in Inkster that go back generations or decades. So how are we lifting those stories up? How are we celebrating them? How are we making sure that they're in the narrative about what progress looks like for our city? You know, I think we can all agree, a lot of us feel rather stuck, and we're excited by and looking forward to progress, but we want that progress to be authentic, in an authentic representation of who we are. And it is about legacy building. We wanna make sure that whatever we're leaving for future generations is something that they can be proud of, but we're not gonna get there as individuals. And if people don't feel like they matter, then they're not gonna be excited by the things we're trying to do. So we need to make sure that we're including everybody, and it's also monetary purpose behind this, because when we're applying for certain grants or funding, they like to see that information, because they like to see where their money is going, and they like to see that it's going to make an impact. So if we can say, you know, this family, this generation, this is what we're excited by, and we have that actual data, qualitative data, it can make us more likely to get approved. Before I move on, any feedback or questions? All right. Best practice three, almost fully aligned. We have defined our processes. We have a point of contact. We have conceptual review meetings. So if someone's saying that they wanna do something or some type of development, we actually now have a process in which we kinda did, but we needed to elaborate on it more so that people can come and actually pitch what they're trying to do to a planner, and then that planner can tell them whether or not it's feasible based on certain things. An internal review procedure, approval authority, fee schedule, making sure that there's payment methods accessible online, access to information, and project tracking. So the access to information part, unlike the internal review procedure, it's more of a document that the public can follow, that easily tells them what steps one through whatever are, and that they can, you know, use that to either get more information online or it's an actual PDF that they can take back. So RRC is looking for something that is more public-friendly. So that's the internal review procedure. It's for the staff. It's who's gonna be responsible for what? What does a pre-conception meeting look like or a pre-application process look like? How is that file being put together? Who are the major stakeholders that should be aware of what's going on? And when we're doing a final, you know, file, then by when should the public be notified? By when should major parties like the planning commission or the ZBA be notified, so forth and so forth? So that has been submitted and approved. And I'm happy to report that best practice four is fully aligned. So we've checked off all the boxes when it comes to boards and commissions. So we have a recruitment and appointment process. We have expectations and skill sets for the application. So there's a fillable PDF online that people can complete when they say they're interested in certain boards and commissions. And then there's also a section that outlines what some of those ideal skills would be depending on the board and commission. There's orientation materials. Some of that was earlier in the year, like for city council and ZBA, updated bylaws. The planning commission annual report was actually updated by McKenna back in March and approved. We have a training plan and joint meetings. So best practice, completely done. These are some of the examples of the documents that I had just mentioned in boards and commissions. So the development training strategy is essentially setting expectations for how these larger decision-making bodies like city council, planning commission, and the ZBA will get trained, what trainings are relevant, what those resources are, and how we're gonna address what's kind of a requirement, and that's the joint meeting session. So I won't go over the entire plan, but the main page I wanna point out is the annual joint training meeting or workshop. There's two activities that if we don't at least do both, at the very minimum, I would like to see that all the major stakeholders, planning commissions, ZBA, city council, and the public meeting attendees come to the November planning commission meeting, because that's when we're supposed to get the draft for the master plan. But the other recommendation is the capital improvements plan, because like I said, it's major projects that we're gonna be funding over a six-year period, and the governing body does have to approve that plan, so that will be another joint session opportunity. Any feedback or questions about that? And then the other documents listed here are just examples of the recruitment policy process, the expectations and skill set, and the bylaws. So some of the heavier, excuse me, best practice or heavier-weighted items come around economic development and marketing. So the marketing plan is in a process of being drafted. That is essentially our branding. How are we gonna communicate to the public that Inkster is a great place to be? This is where you wanna do business. This is where you wanna live, making sure that it's cohesive, it looks good, it sounds good, and that can be both in print and online. Do we have certain incentive tools in place? And that could be like, I guess, tax incentives, like how can we make it easier either monetarily or otherwise for certain businesses to do development here? And then our economic development plan, you know, how are we making sure that we're strengthening, I'm sorry, strengthening and addressing like the challenges in a competitive market and positioning ourselves to win, you know, pretty much when it comes to money? So those do have to be annually updated as well. So just to finish this off, when we first started back in December, we were at 32% when it came to our path to certification, and I'm happy to report that we're now at 69. So... And those last things that are gonna take us to the finish line are like the master plan, the economic development plan, and the capital improvements plan. So those are the, pretty much, the ones that are gonna take us to the finish line. Any questions, feedback? Was that clear? Okay. I guess I'm done. Thanks.
Next, we have Maya Roots, who's gonna give us a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, council, and respected directors-in-chief. My name is Maya Roots. I am representing Department of Public Services. I am the special projects manager, and we're here to talk, I'm here with Daniel, which is my engineer from Benish, and we're here to talk about North River Park Drive. So this was one of our original water main projects, where we changed it from a six-inch main to an eight-inch main, and we changed 32 lead services out of the 50 services that we had. So that was one of the big things that we did accomplish with this project. But while our project was going on, even though the road was not in good shape before we started, it became in worse shape after we were finished. So the residents had concerns. They contacted us daily, and we had a town hall meeting for them to address their concerns. We had meetings with my director and our engineers to discuss actually repairing the road so they can, as they say, be livable, because now the dust control and the dust that is there is making it hard for them to live. So I will let Daniel explain what we're going to do, because we are in the spring, late spring of 2025, we are going to repair the road.
So the plan is we're gonna do a full reconstruction on the road, so this should have like a 25-year life, you know, pending maintenance and things like that. We're gonna improve the drainage on the street with that, so we should have no more complaints and have a nice long road for them. Another thing is, you know, this is gonna be May or so, that we'll be hopefully beginning construction on this. So until that time, we're gonna make sure we're filling potholes, grading the street, keeping the dust down until then. So that's kind of our plan for that project.
That's good news. Yeah, very good news.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jerome, you probably made somebody happy.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, consider agenda.
Some move.
They moved second. Second? Oh, that's, come on. All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Boards and commissions.
Approval to reappoint Charles Coleman to the aging commission.
Good. Motion?
Some move.
Second. Probably move the second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Substitution. We have a family member here.
Approval to reappoint Deborah Owens to the aging commission.
Some move.
Probably move the second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Approval to reappoint Jean Liddell to the aging commission.
Some move. Second.
Probably move the second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes.
Approval to reappoint Gabe Henderson to the aging commission.
We gotta keep him on there.
He's that popular. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes.
Approval to reappoint June Patterson to the aging commission.
Some move.
Second. We probably moved the second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes.
Approval to reappoint Rosie Allen Thompson to the aging commission.
So move.
Second.
Probably move the second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes. Move on down to new business.
Consider approval to purchase one vacant parcel, case number LD 24-43. The parcel is located on the south side of Woodbine Drive between Beach Daily and John Daly Road. Parcel ID noted, and the amount of 1,000. Please see attached Wayne County Public Records.
Some move.
Probably move the second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes.
Consider approval to purchase two vacant parcels, case number LD 24-45. The parcels are located on the west side of Williams between Beach and Carlisle Street. Parcel IDs noted for 3,000. Please see attached Wayne County Public Records. The parcels are next to the buyer's home.
Some move.
Probably move the second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes.
Consider approval to adopt notice of intent resolution related to the city's proposed two 2024 capital improvements bonds for improvements to the water supply and sewage disposal system of the city, and authorize the city clerk to publish the notice of intent.
Some move. Support.
Probably move the supported discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes.
Consider authorizing the director of the DPS to enter into an agreement with the Wayne County Department of Public Services to maintain the storm water management system in accordance with the drawing attached as Exhibit A and the terms of long-term maintenance planned attached as Exhibit B, and the Wayne County Storm Water Ordinance and Administrative Rules.
Some move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Probably move the second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes.
Granting permission for Attorney Perkins to represent Judge Johnson in the 22nd District Court in the actions against McGee versus 22nd District Court.
Some move.
Support.
Probably move the supported discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes. My favorite part, public participation. Lenora Wermeyer and Gabe Henderson.
Good afternoon, everyone, it's City Council. I am...
Should we say good afternoon?
Excuse me. Gabe, now, we're, we're trying to get this together now. What we're asking is, well, on our next beautification cleanup, which is September 28th, we wanna name that, we wanna have that Spirit Day in the name of Tony Bailey. That was our previous president. She was excellent, and we're trying to follow along her footsteps. I will say, I think she did a much better job than what we're trying, but we're all getting older. And so that will be, you know, our regular cleanup starts at 10 o'clock, but the Spirit Day will really start at noon. We want, before you can come and get our refreshments, we want you to be helping keep the city clean. That's one of our main focuses, and we do have the flyers.
Clean at 10:00, refreshments at 12:00.
That's not gonna be repeated. I apologize, Mayor, but it ain't gonna be repeated for the time the refreshment starts.
Okay, 12 o'clock.
In all seriousness, you all, we are the beautification committee, and what we're asking is that our last regular cleanup will be the last Saturday in October. But we know, we've been going out and we've been trying to clean, and we're finding we clean one day, and the next day it looks like we haven't done anything. We also recognize that we all, our members, are getting older. So what we're asking is for the council to really recruit for us and nominate members that will be willing to work on the beautification committee, not just have their names, but be willing to help us keep things clean. And it's, it's not that you gotta do a whole lot, but we want you to be able to pick up in front of your house, pick up maybe in front of your neighbor's house on your street. When you see something all messed up, report it, so that's a place we can put on to clean up. It's getting to be winter time, and we know that. I would say, for instance, where I live on Farnham, there's older, I shouldn't call him an older gentleman, but anyway, a disability gentleman lives in front of me. I noticed that our last rainfall, the water kept backing up. I'm thinking, I cleaned the sewer, the drain on my side, what's going on? And then a couple of days after it stopped raining, I got rid of all these mosquito bites that were swelling. I went and I cleaned out his drain for him, because I know he can't do it. So those are the little things that we can do for our neighbors, and especially someone that's on the beautification committee. If you see something like that, we're asking you, as the committee, go on and clean it up. So that's what we're asking each council member to nominate someone that they know be willing to do that. Also, our list, the list that we actually have, some participate and some don't. Some of us have gotten recertified for the next year, some of us haven't. So what we want is for us to all come together, get new nominations, get them appointed, and then we can be what they call certified, or, you know, that's what we're asking everybody to do.
Well, thank you. Do you have something else? We'll start in 30 minutes.
Hello, hello, family. My name is Gabe Henderson. I'm one of the members of the beautification. Of course, I wanna say again, Tony Bailey, wonderful woman and all that. I'm on, I'm on, she was beautification, commission on aging, we had the CERT program, okay? Goodfellas, you know, and a few other things she was doing. She had a full-time job, you know? We miss her dearly, love. We're gonna try to do something special for her. Okay? Courtyard, Michigan and Inkster Road, southwest corner. A nice place. We try to keep that nice and clean. We would probably, we would like to try to get that set up to be a place to give a monument, a plaque for Tony Bailey, because that's one of her special spot, okay? Yeah. Right now, we got some vandals that come up there and they try to, you know, knock high on something, knock those columns and all that stuff like that, but we're gonna try to repair those, we're gonna put a nice bit of plaque. You got a beautiful...
Where you wanna put that?
A big part?
Where you wanna put the plaque at?
Yeah, you know, right there, okay, the southwest corner, yeah, southwest corner. Wait, that courtyard, right there by the dollar store.
Gotcha.
Okay. Try to get that mixed up. That was our special place, you love that place. We got a beautiful evergreen there. Try to decorate that during the time of Christmas and all that, and, you know, try to do something really special. And I would also like to say, RIRIS, our program, that school program for the kids started back today, so it's gonna be Mondays and Wednesdays from 3:30 to 7:30. Okay? If you wanna drop by and see what we're doing with the kids, and we're trying to do our best to teach them woodworking, well, I do woodworking, carpentry, they sawing, artwork, cooking, and I think they're gonna be doing some more sawing again and all that. It's a wonderful program. And I wanna thank, thank y'all for allowing, okay, RIRIS organization to have our, you know, program there. It's a nice place, and I wanna thank y'all kindly for that, okay? And that's about it. I just wanna say something about RIRIS, you know, and I love y'all. Yeah, and I see y'all, I said 28th? Yeah. Come on back. Oh, yeah. I'm hoping that some of the, some of our pastors, our reverends, okay, they're listening to this meeting, and they come on in, because at one time, some years ago, they were supposed to be working in conjunction with us on programs of beautification. I don't know what happened to that, but we try to get that restarted with the pastors, you know, of our community. So with that, 10-4, over and out. Love y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Inkster Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. That's the wrong one.
Good evening, Mayor Nolan and Mayor Pro Tim Chisholm. My name and members of the city council. My name is Dr. Larissa Barclay Abrams, and I am the president of the Inkster Alumni Chapter, and I am here today on behalf of our chapter membership to give you a little bit of information and to reaffirm our collective community... bit of information and to reaffirm our collective community partnership. The Inkster Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated has a rich history and legacy of excellence. We serve thirty cities in western Wayne County, especially the city of Inkster. Our charter date is December nineteenth, nineteen fifty-nine, and this year we are celebrating our sixty-fifth anniversary. Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated was founded by twenty-two collegiate members on January thirteenth, nineteen thirteen, on the campus of Howard University in Washington, DC. So these students use their collective strength to promote academic excellence and to assist those in need. In March of nineteen thirteen, the founders of our organization performed their first public act by participating in the Women's Suffrage March, and that was also in DC. So the effort of these suffrages eventually led to the Nineteenth Amendment to the United States Constitution, which guarantees that women have the right to vote and that neither the federal government nor any state can deny that right based on sex. Tuesday, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, is National Voter Registration Day. We come before this honorable body to affirm our commitment to continue working in the community with City Clerk Georgina Holliday and her office. We encourage everyone to vote. We encourage everyone to get a voting plan, to study who is running so that you can make an informed choice, and to not only just register, help people register to vote, but also get your family members to go vote. The Inkster Alumni Chapter is ready to stand on the front line of election twenty-twenty-four with you, just as our founders did in nineteen thirteen, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Rochelle.
Good evening.
You know what, I just, I'm up here, nothing bad, just to say thank you. Yep, just, just thank you.
So we scared you, right?
I just come to say thank you, though, for real. I appreciate it, what you done.
Thank you.
For getting that done for me.
Being patient with us.
Oh, yeah.
Tina Jones, I think there's a doctor in front of that. You got to be humble.
Always, right? Always got to be humble. Good evening, everyone. It's so good to see you, and good to see you, Mayor. I missed the last City Council meeting, but my sorority sisters came. I just came to thank you all again for those who have joined us for our actual kickoff, as well as those who have committed to attend our candidate forum, which will be held this Thursday. We are excited to bring candidates who, I would say, have not ordinarily been in this area, but to this area, to help our voters in this area be informed, as well as we are excited about tomorrow, which is Voter Registration Day. We're going to be at Robishaw High School from nine-thirty AM till about twelve-thirty PM, so hopefully we will see you all out there, but we are excited about that as well, and that's all I had. I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Barbara Cooper.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council, residents of the city of Inkster. On October the nineteenth, will be the Goodfellows Annual Pancake Breakfast, starting at eight AM to twelve noon. And at eleven forty-five, is going to be the drawing for the Booker and Floyd Dozier Foundation. We, that committee is trying to keep it going, that foundation, to help send kids to college, and the raffle tickets are one dollar. And I didn't bring mine, I don't know if anybody else has some. Gabe, you got yours? Okay. We'll be selling them, helping them out also, and everybody knows that the Goodfellows is no child without a Christmas, and we are looking forward to having a dynamic December. It is going to be great, and all our children going to get something, all right? And the only way that it can happen is that the community comes and support the Inkster Goodfellows. I do have some tickets, just want to let you know. And I put out the wrong flyer. I grabbed the Cardboard City Flyer, which was Saturday, and not the, not the Goodfellows. Charge it to my head, not my heart. Thank you.
Mr. Henderson, you good? You turned in the card, too. Yeah, you already spoke, but you turned in the card. No, 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 no. Madam Clerk.
I would just like to say that I met with Donna Wilson from the Delta Inkster Chapter. It was a pleasure meeting with her, and also I sent a flyer stating that on Thursday, October the fourth, we will be at Twin Towers from nine AM to twelve PM. From Thursday, October the fourth, from one to four, we will be at Cherry Hill Place. On Friday, October the fifth, from nine AM to twelve PM, we will be at Thompson Towers. And Friday, October the fifth, from one PM to four PM, we will be at Cherry Hill Place. Register to vote and absentee voter applications on site, and I would just like to thank you for extending your assistance with this, and I did forward your chapter of flyer.
All right.
That's it?
That's it? Mr. Treasurer? Okay. Mayor and Council Communication, Councilwoman Roberts.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
What? Councilwoman Bishop, nothing for me, ma'am. Councilwoman Scott.
Shopping Center.
Councilwoman Richardson, save us.
I shall save you. One thing, number one, I think Barbara Cooper, you forgot to mention about the Goodfellows newspaper, the ads. So we will be selling, the Goodfellows will be doing ads for No Child Left Behind, No Child Without a Christmas, so please see her and take out an ad. Also, to the beautification committee, I volunteer. I would, I would like to work with you, but one other thing, I'm not picking up no stuff now. Those days over. However, I do have some suggestions that maybe when we had Inkster schools, we used ROTC, and we use the kids that need community service, whether it's, what is that they did, yeah, we need to get into the schools, and I'm willing to work with you and kind of recruit some young blood, okay? If that's okay with the council. Also, on October fifth, I will have, we will be having a community informational forum at the complex from ten AM to one PM at, of course, the complex. During this time, we usually try to bring in resources for the community. So in talking with Wayne County Treasurer Eric Sabre, he suggested that we do it earlier. So those of you that know you have not paid your taxes in a few years, you have an opportunity to come and ask questions regarding your property and set up payments. We're requesting that you take advantage of this and do it now, so the next year you won't be so stressed. Save your homes. So he's going to be available to do that. Also, we will have Wayne Metro Community Agency, they will be there, they also have programs for property tax, they have food support programs, they also have help with utility and water and sewage payments, so they will be there. I also have Michael Richard from Wayne County Veterans Affairs. He will address concerns of veterans and the families of veterans. He'll let you know what resources are available for you. We'll also have a State of Michigan Secretary of State Mobile Unit will be at the complex. So if you need your license or you need your tags and you don't want to pull a number, you could come to the complex and take advantage of those services, okay? Now, this is only done by appointment. So if you want to do that, you will have to contact me, seven-three-four-five-nine-five-six-five-nine-three, or see me, I'll give you my card. I don't have flyers tonight, but the flyers will be available at the city. I'll make sure that they're at the complex, and hopefully when I get the flyers, we will put them online, so you can do that. But I'm hoping that you will take advantage of the resources that we're going to be bringing in. I do have some more lined up, but they haven't confirmed yet, but this will be a good event. We also do have DPS, of course, and they will be talking about the Code Red. This is a free event, open to everyone. We will have light refreshments, I may even bake a couple of pound cakes for you, give you some coffee. So please keep that in mind, and I'm hoping that you will attend and support this event. Thank you, sir. Ten, ten AM to one PM. October fifth, Saturday. Saturday, October fifth. We're going to try to do forums at least maybe twice a year, so that you can get resources out there, some, trying to find that grant money, everybody needs help, so we're going to still try to bring them to Inkster. So you guys, we need you to spread the word, anyone that's in need, please come. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Howard.
After that, I don't have anything.
Mayor Protem.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have an opportunity to attend the Cardboard City Picnic. It was well-attended with music and good food. Thank you for inviting us all. Also, had an opportunity to attend the Police Memorial alongside Councilwoman Richardson, and something was quite different this time, and I would ask the police chief to speak on the presentation that they gave the young man, just so the residents and those who are viewing are informed about who else was recognized at this memorial celebration.
So we have auxiliary officer that was present during the time one of our officers was killed in the line of duty. That was thirty years ago, Officer Kenneth Woodmore was killed. Auxiliary Officer Hadley, if you guys don't know, our auxiliary personnel, they work for free, they don't get paid to come in, it's strictly volunteer. Officer Hadley happened to pull up on the scene when Officer Kenneth Woodmore was being fired upon. Officer Hadley returned fire upon that person that shot Officer Woodmore, and because of his bravery and his due diligence, that person was convicted. Had he not been there, we probably wouldn't have got justice for Officer Woodmore. So we gave him the Medal of Honor for his bravery, so after thirty years, he was finally recognized for what he did. It was very interesting, because the Woodmore family had never met him. And so it was a very emotional day. They were really happy to have met him and to hear about the things that he did that day that their brother was killed. So it was, it was a good, it was a good event. I was proud to be able to give that to him. His family was in attendance, the entire Woodmore family was in attendance. Our other fallen officers, their families were in attendance, so it was, it was a very emotional event, and so we were glad to be able to present him with that Medal of Honor for the courageous acts that he took on that day.
Thank you. Let's see, I wanted to ask if the Department of Public Services could just give an update about GFL situation and/or the repair of their trucks? Because as you know, we get calls all the time about trucks leaking and just the delayed trash pickup, if there is any app update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You're the only one that's here at this particular time, Mayor Protem. I don't have an update, I will have one at the next council meeting, because me, the mayor, Mr. Carrington, are meeting with priority this Friday.
Okay, thank you. And last but not least, I thought Commissioner Williams was going to speak on the flyer, but she did not in her presentation, so I'm going to. This is a information that we put out. First, I want to apologize. It appears when we put the flyer out and gathered some of the information, we clearly missed some. When we were talking about all the different official City Inkster Facebook pages, as we're trying to get that information to you all, so you can follow these as well as the additional ones that you do follow, but so you'll know, these are the ones that are ran by the city. From what I understand, right now, we missed the Police Department, and we missed the Commissioner on Agent, and I believe we might have missed the Fire Department, too. So if there is any other ones from department heads, I am publicly asking that you send an email letting us know exactly what those Facebook pages are, so we can enhance the flyer and correct the information that's out there, and just figure out how we're going to do, you know, going forward, because we have a lot of different Facebook pages, and my idea was that we centralize everything, but we'll see how it works out. But make sure you grab a flyer right there on the side, and again, we will update this, and we will get it corrected on the internet as well. This is just a flyer where we all took a joint picture, and we are letting the public know these are our official pages, the city's websites, and all that other good stuff, and we're on a mission to ensure your online safety and keep you connected with authentic city updates. It's vital to know where to find accurate information about your community, because as we know, sometimes comments happen in different groups, and you can't see eighteen different Facebook pages at once, and by the time the rumors get out there and you're trying to put out the positive information, the damage is done, and then people are rallying the troops and showing up at a council meeting to confirm the false information, and it's just, you know, a bad look. So we want to make sure we're doing the right thing going forward, and we're going to try our best to continue that same energy. And that's all I have.
Madam Clerk.
Just to note that the public comments that are received via email have been distributed to the council and mayor and will be a permanent part of the record.
Okay. Now, I've been instructed to read this. We're going to blame Jerome Bibbins for this, he made me read it. The City of Inkster recently secured funding for sewer improvement project, the Clean Water State Revolving Fund program. On Friday, September sixth, twenty twenty-four, the City of Inkster closed on the City Water Supply and Sewer Disposal System Revenue Bond Series twenty twenty-four B. This bond financing raised a little more than twenty-two million dollars for the city's water and sewer infrastructure. Because of the state grants, twenty million, twenty million of the amount received is converted to a grant. Thus, we received twenty-two point two million dollars, and will be responsible for paying back only two point two million dollars of these funds. The money will be used for the southeast section of the city. The city will be doing a sewer separation project, separating the combined system, which has sanitary and storm sewers combined. We will be replacing it with a brand-new separated system, which will have the sanitary and storm system separated. The new sewers will result in fewer flooding of streets and basements. Mr. Bibbins? Enjoy your clapping, because it doesn't happen often. Just to give a little report, myself, Councilman Bishop, Shadet Crutchfield, Sean Crutchfield, we all went to Washington, DC last weekend, and we got a chance to go to the White House, had a briefing at the White House, got some information on some resources that may be available to us. We're going to follow up on that, some grant money. We also got a chance to talk network with our US Senator Gary Peters. Of course, Rashida Tlaib was there, we talked to her, we always talk to her. And we got a chance to mix and mingle with other government officials from all across
That was in harmony.
We're going to make it for the ball.